Ready?
Yes ma'am. We're at six twenty-five, we are back. Action resulted in our public, the board approved two parent requests. And that's it. We have a public comment. Yes?
This week is National School Breakfast Week along with our New Cross America, so it's a really busy week here. So, I just wanna say that we coordinated our lunches with books, our books, you know, so that we can kinda join in with New Cross America. But on Wednesday, we have, we have our special guest of Smokey De Bear that will be coming for our lunch.
So we haven't smoked little Smokies up on them?
No, but I got stickers.
Stickers?
No, we're doing campfire food.
Oh alright!
You know, like breakfast sandwiches.
Safe campfire?
Smores.
What are our stickers?
No, no, help these sort of.
Smores can hold ours.
You wanna recognize that the fire chief helped pull this off?
Oh, yes. Yeah, I do, I do wanna thank the fire department and the fire chief especially because the original Smokey couldn't make it for various reasons and I contacted our chief and he has stepped up and helping us.
Sweet.
So I do wanna say.
So Mike Brooks is gonna be Smokey?
No, he's gonna be Smokey's handler.
Handler. Nice.
Still want to request.
Serve lunch, yeah.
Yeah, come on over.
Yes.
Any other public comments?
Alright, we're gonna move on to try to catch up here. Approval of the agenda, taking motion to approve the agenda.
By Sarah, second by Jeremy. Any other additions or revisions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or to stand?
None.
Carries. Approval of minutes, you have the January twenty-seventh school board meeting minutes, motion to approve. Motion by Sarah, second by Ed. Any other discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor? Carries. We have the February third minutes. Oh, that's right, the twenty-seventh was the special meeting and the February third was the other, taking motion to approve the February third. Motion by Jeremy, second by Sarah. Any other discussion there? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed or to stand? Carries. February eleventh, school board minutes, taking motion to approve, that was the special meeting, that was the meeting that held the public hearing on the SB two. Motion by Ed, second by Jeremy. Any other discussion there?
I'm still bitter about that, but I'm moving on.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone bitter?
Just me.
Okay, just jacket, I'm gonna make, get that for the record. Alright, you have your consent agenda. In there you have your principal's report, your middle school and high school principals' reports. Your capital reserve fund balance and copy your capital reserve. Anything needed to be pulled out of there?
Can I ask a request?
Yes.
Could we get a call or roll from Kenna and the middle and high school and how many teachers are actually missing?
Sure.
Like, do they have?
Like, how many staff they need?
Four openings, twelve openings.
Okay, so.
They just say they have openings, can they just let us know, hey, we need five science teachers and two math teachers and an English teacher? You know, how under support are our children?
Sure.
Clearly.
I know it's a lot.
Right. But one other thing.
Yes.
The charter in, in homeschoolers keep falling off of our meeting package, so didn't know if we could.
Would you like that to be a standing item?
Yeah.
Sure, okay.
Just because we get asked.
Sure.
Quite often.
So, do you want that as just an enrollment number?
Yeah.
So, together, like this homeschooling?
And that's per K six?
Yeah.
Uh, so we have that, we have that K one, yeah.
Yeah, we could just put it on the bottom of like this, the MBS one.
Yeah.
Sure.
But you don't wanna set that as a.
Sure. No, we can put it right in the front.
Or it would be like this, it'd be the same map.
Yeah, we could just put it on the bottom.
Sure.
Alright. Anything else?
No.
I'll take the motion to approve the consent agenda items. Motion by Jeremy, second by Ed. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yep.
Any opposed or to stand? Carries. Alright, March eleventh is Teacher Workshop Day, no school, that is also Election Day. Parent conferences, there's no school on the twenty-first. SAU thirteen joint board meeting is on the twenty-fourth, that's at six o'clock in Freedom. The SAU nine thirteen is on the twenty-sixth and that's at five o'clock in Conway at the Professional Development Center, is that correct?
Yes.
That's what I was rescheduling.
Yes.
Yes, from January. Our next regular school board meeting here is the seventh at six PM in the Ruth Chick Library. And spring vacation is April twenty-first to the twenty-fifth, that's coming quick.
It's crazy.
Looks like we just got back from February ago. Principals' report.
Try to be brief. It is New Cross America Week, so we have a lot going on. We have to thank Terry Flanagan and Diana Hayward for all that they do. They start working on this months in advance to pull it together. And then we staff kind of moved into that committee to help out from our spirit team to plan it out. So we have a fun day, every day of dress-up, it matches with school breakfast, lunch. And we also have an additional book club this year, so Mrs. Flanagan has always done a book club for the older kids. But now we have one for Greys two and three that's happening. We've got twenty kids that are participating in that and really enjoying it, so it's nice to add to it. We have the Cliff giveaway, this is the year of the book. And Wednesday night, we have family trivia night. So we'll start off with Title One, just giving you information about our Title One programming and how we spend our money. And then we will have pizza dinner and family trivia about books. Some of that trivia is from books that kids have read in the building, so they'll, you know, make sure that they know the information that's there. And some will just be some traditional children's books. That's one. And second one is the floor, because the floor was brought up at the deliberative session and money put into the warrant article, so I thought we should just at least talk about what the floor is officially. So what is proposed is a PULastic, P-U-L-A-S-T-I-C. It's a seamless, this is from the marketing person, a seamless multi-purpose sports floor that provides strength and performance for all levels of play and competition. So it is the same type of floor that is used at North Conway Community Center and the Meredith Community Center. It is good resiliency for comfort and injury prevention from them, seamless, non-force, smooth surface for easy maintenance, repair and resurface options, excellent contact noise reduction, outstanding acoustic insulation, sustainable, water-based. We are looking at lining it with a basketball and with pickleball because we know the pickleball's something that the Conway, that the Madison rec has talked about off and on. My understanding is there's a pretty big pickleball clan that happens over in Tammer. So, looking to just kind of, if we're gonna do it, put those lines down so that it's an option for people. So that's.
Question about cleaning.
Um, super easy.
Okay, so we're, we're looking, I know one of the things that we have budgeted for is a new.
Floor scrubber.
Floor scrubber. Is that floor scrubber okay to use on that type of floor?
Um, I cannot answer that question, I do not know. But that floor scrubber would be for all these other floors too.
Right, no, no, I know, I just wanna make sure that it's not gonna.
Yeah, I don't know, um.
I don't know what the floor, I haven't been in the.
Cause honestly I thought we were gonna end up with like, this was a plan for next, we were thinking twenty-twenty-six at the earliest, so.
Right.
What's the, hold, hold?
PULastic.
P-U-L-A-S-T-I-C. It's like plastic, but it has a PU instead of just going with plastic. Is there a way to shut the music off, I think? Sorry.
Heather, do, what would be the timing of this, just?
Um, it would be summer because it will take, um, I think it was three weeks is what it will take. Because this, so the quote that we have for the hundred twenty-five thousand is everything, it's ripping up the current BCT tile, it's sandblasting. It is assuming that we, so we did worst-case scenario because it's Madison and that seems to be, if it can happen, it will. So it will also include a vapor barrier, if we don't need it, then we won't have that, but we were just trying to plan ahead. So it will be all of that initial work and then it will be the installation. And it gives a little bit of just wiggle room in that quote for any changes in prices between now and then.
Okay, so start to finish, three weeks, about three weeks?
The estimate is three weeks.
Okay.
And what's a warranty on that?
Just putting my rec hat on.
What's the? Ten-year warranty on it or something? Or is it not fifty-year?
Um, standard five years warranty with optional extended warranty program.
I'm just wondering if it's compatible with the multi-use we have down there?
It is recommended because of the multi-use. So when we had the contractor in here to do the HVAC units, it was one of those conversations that we had, I've also had that conversation with Sean Bergeron. And so the contractor that was here had done the one in Meredith and said because we use it for all those different reasons, we should do the multi-use so that we don't have to worry about the wood being damaged.
Bring up that, there is.
Hardwood, I know it'd be great, but you can't, you gotta roll everything out.
We should have asked.
Oh, stage.
Yeah.
So.
A stage, we should have.
March eleventh, if it passes. So if the warrant article passes March eleven, then we're gonna have to get bids out. At least.
We, we shoot for three, I mean, our warrant policy is three, but we act.
Right.
So we post it and then we send it out to people to try to get people to bid, but we can't make people bid. So we go through that process to see if we get any quotes. Right now, construction is booming, so people don't need the business, so they don't need to quote. So doing that HVAC was hard to get quotes.
Right. Oh, I remember.
To like ask people to come.
But I'm just trying to make, see if timeline, we can get it in, i- i- if it does pass, if we can get it in for this summer. Which, I mean, obviously it seems like that was the hope. It would, it would also screw up a little bit of summer rec if they're using it at all. And potentially old homie. I mean, just depending on when they can start, I think it's just, but.
Well, just get on it right away, right?
It's a swift timeline. Well, no, I mean, I think once we know what's happening, then we move from that.
Right.
We'll have to orchestrate that very carefully.
Yep.
Our rec kids survived last year, so.
Yeah, we used.
They can survive another year.
Upstairs, I think.
Yeah, they were upstairs, yeah.
Alright. Question, other questions?
What'd you say, for the five-year warranty?
If all of this passes, then I will certainly seek additional information.
Is that, is that standard five years, that seems super short.
We've been seeing that more and more. Five, five or ten.
It's just not long at all.
Not for commercial use, I mean.
No.
Exactly.
Right, I was thinking fifteen or twenty at least.
Right. That's a negotiating point, it's unfully debated. Okay. Alright. Other questions related or for the principal? Seeing some, moving on to the business administrator's report, so Heather is not here, documents are in the packet.
Did you say you had a question?
Yeah, I got a couple.
Hopefully people, we can answer for you.
Yeah, I do.
Go for it.
Uh, page thirty-eight, about halfway down, matter of distribution is running a fair amount under? Is that reasonable to expect?
Uh, yes, based, based on some situations, some dynamics. Ended up, we were able to educate some students in house that we were originally anticipating not being able to do that, so that is due to.
Yeah, yeah. Other than one, uh, forty-three.
Well, before we move on, so I, I know, I know what you're saying. And there's a lot of confidence behind that, that, that will continue?
So far, things are, are progressing well.
Okay.
Forty-three, I checked.
Yeah. So, on the building refurbishment, and it's probably more than you just understanding it, that's the HVAC, uh, it's like four lines, five lines now. Where it's.
Better than the negative?
Yeah.
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Right, that's, that's the accounting move, sorry, from the capital improvement plan.
That hasn't happened yet. I don't think she's made that, that adjustment.
I don't believe she has either.
Okay, it just looked really bad.
Right. It's overspent by a hundred and six thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's, that's bad.
Just a little. Yeah.
Okay. And then the other one was, uh, special ed transport, about halfway down that same page, same thing. That's really in the positive, which is good. We have two, we don't have to transport as much, page four to three.
Isn't that related to the same, to the same?
That's exactly right, yeah. Okay. Alright, that was.
So the dollar's just a placeholder basically?
For which item?
So we don't lose that line?
It's been, it's been approved, it's been budgeted, and again, I mean, we're, we're always looking for the least restrictive environment and try to.
That's not what she's talking about.
No, 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 I know, yeah.
No, 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 I was just saying, so we kept the dollar there to keep that line open?
Yeah, we wouldn't close it, and also begin, where I was going with that train of thought is that things could, things could change.
Okay. Yes.
The special ed contract to transport a one dollar.
Right, right for dollars.
Carrying.
Oh yeah, anytime, right, that, sure, sure, anytime you have that one dollar item, it's to keep the line open, because once you zero it out, you can't.
In the, in the past, what has happened and the reason we left that as, we've left that as a dollar in the past, is a parent had said, I'm, I will drive my kid
Yeah.
Um, to that placement, and we paid mileage. But it can't come out of the transportation, it has to come out of contracted services.
Okay.
And I got, I got one more, but go for it, she's not here, so she can't really answer it. The bottom of forty-four, the expenditures does not equal her sheet. No way do these actually line up. So it's, she's not here, so she can't speak to it, but the sheet does not, you can't, I can't make the numbers work, I'm pretty good with numbers, but I can't get them, I can't get that up.
Wait on that.
Yeah, it's not like a big discrepancy, it's like seventy thousand. So it could be just something missed.
In movement or something like that.
Movement or something, but, and I know this is one that she puts up.
Yeah, I think she started this a little early for us, coming in, but, yeah.
Yeah. She may have done this, printed it after she did this.
Yeah.
Cause this says two twenty-eight, and this says two twenty-four.
Right.
So they might be different.
Different days of printing.
Slightly different ledgers.
Okay.
That were pulled out of them, but they don't.
Yeah. But basic, I, I think what this projected fund balance does is show that we, there, there is a projected fund balance.
Right, but they should be the same.
Right.
I'm sure Heather can explain that all, have an explanation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, it's all right.
Alright. Other questions? Moving on to.
It actually does line up if you're looking at your expenses, that's on a year-to-date. The year-to-date grand total, four eight oh one, four two nine. That's what she's got in the expenditures of eight, four eight oh one, four two nine.
Right, but that's, but they enclose it though. Yeah, yeah, I don't know, it just doesn't.
Right.
These conferences are the same.
It, it seems a little bit off to me, and maybe I'm looking at it, I've looked at it.
Let's get, let's get, uh, we'll get Heather, I appreciate everyone having, uh, set eyes on that and we'll, we'll ask Heather for.
It's not much, and maybe I'm looking at the wrong lines.
Yeah, yeah, we, we'll get Heather to be able to explain. Exactly. Her work.
Alright, Superintendent.
Yeah, so I wanna talk briefly, I'm gonna be cognizant of time here, so I'm gonna try to work through this very quickly. So, talking with Principal Witter, what we wanna do, moving into the spring, is look at our student achievement scores and present the board with, specifically focusing in on a couple areas in a cohort of our K-two students. This has been the second year of our K-two multi-age classroom. So, things have been going very well from a qualitative point of view, so I think the next step of us is to look at the, you know, quantitative information, student growth, student progress, and really be able to dig into that. So we'll be, we'll be looking at that out of two specific data sets, our DIBELS and our STAR, as these students do not take the state assessment. So in addition to that, when we break down the K-two group, we'll also be looking at three-six and how we're doing with that triangulation between Renaissance, STAR three sixty, DIBELS, and our, our state achievement score. So, looking forward to that, that's gonna be some, it's always, Heather, I always enjoy that work together. So we'll bring that forward probably in April, May. And I'm also excited just talking with Heather about the work we're doing to gear up for our state achievement testing, and I'll just put in a, a shameless, you know, soapbox statement. Regardless of how we feel about high-stakes testing, it is part of what people look to evaluate schools that may not be as versed in education as the people sitting around this table. So we're, we're gonna give it our, our best go and really get our students excited, as excited as you can to take a test. But we're gonna get everybody in the right place and I'm, I'm excited about the, the results we're gonna have. That's, any questions on testing?
So the testing for the K three-two, that will be, when they are testing, will they be, will it be K one, two?
Um, so we already ha, we, that's some ongoing information that we already have, so these students already are, are DIBLED. So we'll report out kind of on that cohort group, if I'm understanding your, your question correctly.
Right, but it will be at grade, I think you're asking if it's gonna be at grade level or like in.
It's gonna be at grade level.
Yes, yes, exactly, it'll be based off a cut score, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Okay, alright, I'm gonna give a quick, I had a bunch of House bills that I was gonna give, uh, the board an idea of where we are. I'm just gonna cut to the chase on a few of them. So, currently, House Bill two eighty-three, this is relative to the subjects that make up inadequate education. I'll get, I'll get to the punchline here, this was, uh, looked at to be inexpedient to legislate, so this bill has let the, left the House, it's not gonna go further at this point, so it's basically killed. But this was looking at arts education, music, visual arts, world languages, engineering technologies, personal finance and computer science. So basically, that bill would remove those items as part of inadequate education. So the minimum standards are still being worked on by the DOE, there's been several listening sessions. But that's really important work as we move forward to determine what is part of our minimum standards in educating our students. Because these have extremely important effects for drawing that minimum line, we could always do more, but we're required to do a certain amount. And getting rid of some of those key areas is really important, and that also reached into credits needed for graduation. So that was also lowering that threshold. So, that's one that I'm, I think is the, the, our, our legislatures made a wise decision there. And looking at, there's a few other House bills, I'll be really quick with, two thirty-five is looking at amending the educator code of ethics and conduct to have more responsibility to parents. So there's more communication that they wanna be more prescriptive there. There's a bill out there right now with memoranding of understanding to repeal that from public charter schools and school districts. I think that's pretty important right now, we're talking about special ed services, so that would be removed and it would just be expected to make that, make that work. So there's, that's a little vague, if you ask me. There's some certification requirements for school nurses that are becoming more stringent, so while I think that's a great piece, it's gonna make finding school nurses a little more difficult. So, that's something to consider, we'll be tracking that. There is a bill out there, House Bill two hundred, about overriding the local tax cap, which would require supermajority. Luckily, we don't see any of those on our, any of our warrants right now. And, let me, let me grab one more that's an important one. Uh, there's a bill out there, House one twenty-nine, relative to the definition of an evidence-based instruction. So you hear that term a lot, and they wanna really be prescriptive with that term, evidence-based instruction. And that would be looking at, at the delivery of methods, educator training, pedagogy, and adhering to that specific definition. So, some of these things have, you know, pros and cons on either side, but we'll be continuing to track those and keep the board updated as necessary. There's also been, I'm sure the other big one is the Freedom Accounts and widening that, widening that bill.
Questions, Superintendent? Alright, gonna move on to new business, and then question because I had promised to the camera crew that we would cut and give them time to move for seven o'clock meeting.
So, I, I just wanna make a motion for the first reading to accept a view, so I can push that off until next meeting.
Okay. So table that to next month anyways?
Yeah. Yeah, cause we're gonna have a lot.
I think there's gonna be a robust conversation.
There's a lot. From, the federal government coming down, we have to address.
Okay.
So there's gonna be a big pile.
And, I mean, I, can we table the other policies as well?
It's just a second meeting?
Yeah.
I think we can just leave them as is.
Okay, those have been gone through.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think Heather pointed out there was a couple links that needed to be adjusted within, but it's not gonna change the content or anything, it's, it's linking for practical use, so we'll make sure that's.
So, then I will take a motion to approve as a second reading, adoption on the policies DAF, EPCH. Okay, they're all listed right here in, in the board packet. Saving the alphabet soup.
There you go. There you go.
I'll take a second to Ed's motion of Sarah, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye, any opposed or to stand? Carries. Um, Gillian, thinking, scholarship update, was there anything there?
Yeah, so that's been submitted, uh, to Jen Murphy at the high school, I believe. Uh, we talked, I talked with the director about what we were trying to do, do with the intent. And hopefully we get some applicants and they'll let us know, and when we do, we'll bring those more to the board to be part of that decision process.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Six fifty, motion to.
Did you get a second for the, to motion to table that?
Yes, yes.
Oh. Oh, to table, did you, no, I did not, so Sarah will second that now. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, motion to adjourn, six fifty-one.
Nice work.
Alright. Second, all in favor?
Where's Decker?
At your house.
What?
At your house.
Oh, he is? That's hilarious.
We haven't.
Sorry about it.